Yes.
Good evening and welcome to the special planning commission meeting of January 26, 2021. Nora, would you call role, please?
Yes. Chair Mallory.
Present.
Vice Chair Maldonado.
Present.
Commissioner Ebner.
Present.
Commissioner Etheridge.
Present.
And Commissioner Williams.
Present.
Thank you. I'm going to do a little bit of housekeeping here and read the reminders. Due to the physical distancing protocols in place at this time, we continue to encourage public participation remotely. Information on how to provide public comment is explained at the bottom of the published agenda. There are two ways to participate. Join the Zoom meeting by clicking on the link at the top of the agenda. Use the raise your hand button to be called on at the appropriate time. Phone-in participation can be done by calling 408-638-0968 with the conference ID number 819-0857-7417 and the pass code is 292-084. When the item of interest is opened for consideration, press star nine to raise your hand to be called on. When called upon, press star six to unmute, state your name, and provide your comments. These options for public comment will remain available until I close the public comment period for that specific item. This evening, we will be discussing in our study session, the 44 East Third Avenue Draper University Pre-Application Study Session Design Charrette PA-2018-054. So this evening, we are going to have a presentation from the applicant. That's 10 to 12 minutes. Then, after questions from the commission, we're going to open the meeting for public comment, and then we'll close public comment and the commission will begin their discussion. We do have a hard stop at 7 o'clock, so we are being very mindful of our timing on this, and public comment will be limited to one to two minutes per person. Okay, so does staff have anything they'd like to say before we get started?
We do. Good evening, Chair Mallory, Vice Chair Maldonado, and Planning Commissioners, your Planning Manager, Saleh Mara. Before I hand it off to Ms. Lau, I just wanted to provide a little bit of context as to why we're here at this study session slash design charrette. So at our last meeting, when this item was discussed on December 8, one of the things that the Planning Commission discussed with the applicant's design folks is the proposed design. And it seemed like our conversation was hitting a wall. And as such, I offered a design charrette, which, as some of you have now discovered, it's more or less a rolling up the sleeves and looking at different design options. Soon after that was offered on December 8, we met virtually with the applicant's design team, and they expressed concern and reservation in pursuing other designs. As such, we've since recanted that charrette approach. So tonight's meeting is really just going to be Wendy will give a brief overview of what was discussed on that December 8 meeting. And once we are done, we'll hand it off to the applicant's design team, the architect, specifically Mr. Castro, and whether Mr. Draper wants to provide any additional comments in their 15 minutes or less. That'd be great, but the main item here is to get the planning commission's input and the public's input in the remaining 40 minutes. So with that, I will hand it off to Ms. Lau, who will give a brief overview.
Thank you. Good evening, Chair Mallory and members of the Plan Commission. My name is Wendy Lau, Associate Planner and Staff Planner. The item before you tonight is a study session for the Draper University Pre-Application PA 2018-054. As discussed at the Plan Commission Study Session last month, the proposed project is to allow an addition for an elevator, staircase, and associate structures towards the rear of the building. The project also seeks to change these on the 7th, 8th, and penthouse floors from residential dormitories to offices. Staff did want to quickly reiterate some information about the building's historic status. The building is not formally listed as a historic resource under the California Register of Historical Resources or the National Register of Historic Places. With that said, the building was surveyed as part of the city's historic resources survey in 1989, and it has been identified as a contributor to the locally designated San Mateo Downtown Historic District. Our municipal code does call to protect the city's historic structures and downtown historic district. The building is also eligible for listing in the California Register of Historic Places as well as the National Register of Historic Places. The building also qualifies as a historic resource for purposes of CEQA or the California Environmental Quality Act. At the meeting last month, many Plan Commissioners expressed concern about the project design, mainly regarding the impact of the building's historic elements as well as location of the trash and recycling carts. The applicant is here tonight to present their project in more detail, as well as explain how they arrived at the latest proposal as presented. This concludes staff presentation. In addition to the applicant providing their presentation next, the city's historic consultant, Matthew Davis from ARG, is also here tonight to answer any questions the commission may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Wendy. Would the applicant like to pick up their presentation at this point?
Sure. Well, I'll speak for a bit, and then we'll hand it over to Michael.
Okay, and I, excuse me, Mr. Draper, I do want to remind you that there are between 10 and 12 minutes for this presentation, so I just want everyone to be mindful of our time.
Yeah, I'm just going to take one minute. Look, we are thrilled with San Mateo. We love what we've had in this town. We think that, but we really do need to make the building more versatile for us so that it's more flexible and we can do more with it. It's going to help the students. It's going to help the economy. We're going to have a lot more venture capitalists around, and we think it's great. We hired Michael and his team because they have great experience with historic buildings. And, you know, and we thought that they'd do a really nice job of having it so that keeps the historic part, but also shows that, hey, we're a forward-looking city. This is a forward-looking building. And it's, and it has the potential to be extraordinary, and so we're really excited about it. And we hope you guys are too. So, Michael, why don't you go ahead and take over and show all the cool things you've done?
Sure. Good evening, Chair Mallory and Commissioners. Thank you for this opportunity. I just wanted to give you a little background in our office. Brereton Architects has been founded in 1978, so have been around for over 40, 40 years, over 43 years. And we've been working primarily in the Bay Area and doing a lot of work in downtown San Francisco and San Jose. And having said that, we do a lot of work in historic buildings, a lot of repurposing. So we have experience in a lot of different types of ground-up renovation and tenant improvement projects. So, and I invite you all to visit our website, and you can see a little bit more of the projects we do. So, having said that, I wanted to show you a few of, let me go back to this first and share my screen. I wanted to give you a couple of before and after shots of some projects that we did. And this is a Dufflin Theater in Oakland. As you look to the left, it was a theater in the 1920s. It became a movie house soon after. It became the Roxy Theater. And after the Roxy Theater, the bottom-left corner picture is what we inherited. And we needed to make it into an office building that had natural light coming into it, and it was a very historic facade for the city of Oakland. We worked with them, and we actually punched a bunch of windows in their historic facade carefully, trying to make it so that it's very respectful to the architecture, yet making that building functional to go on for years as its repurposed use, which is an office building. The other, this other example I'm going to show you, if you look to the bottom right, that's the existing building in San Francisco. This is not a historic building, but what I wanted to show this is because this particular building, we found out we could add four additional stories. So for Schornstein, we ended up building four stories on top of this, and we wanted the architecture to look like it was always there. So as you can see on the left picture, the two pictures on the right are actually renderings, superimposed with a photography, so photo montage. But the image on the left is an actual as-built afterwards. And you can see the building looks like it was always there. It was always designed to look the way it does. And we're careful about that in our architecture, whether it's in a historic or a nonhistoric building. So I wanted to explain a little bit of the history of initial thoughts of how we got to where we are today. As you can see, the footprint of the elevator in our tower, which is the rectangle in the front of our plan on the left, the footprint of the elevator is pretty big. That's a gurney-sized elevator. And the negative thing about putting it alongside the elevator core is that we're mixing two different uses, which we didn't want to do. And when I say we didn't want to do, Tim Draper has a vision. And that vision was that we're going to change use on the upper stories of the building, introduce venture capitalists and some, you know, professionals that can intermix and become mentors for the students. And so the procession to go up to this new office change-of-view space is a very significant thing. So to come into the building and share an elevator lobby with the dormitory elevators and have a mix wasn't the intent initially for what we wanted to do and create with the building. There's a lot of problems with this, too, as far as the architecture, because the stair tower, which we wanted to add, to add for firelife safety, would be naturally located on the southwest corner in this case. And that would come up and poke up on the elevation. It's a little bit more visible, which is the west elevation. So another study we did was what happens? We split the cores, give the elevator right from the front of the building, as you can see on the left, have a streetfront entry for it. The problem with that is it wasn't ceremonial enough. What Tim was visioning is someone would go into the Ben Franklin Court, get into their own unique sequence and procession, go up a glass-enclosed elevator with panoramic views. And that vision was not realized, or there wasn't the connection there that we would get with this particular scheme. Again, it had the problem with the stair poking up on the southeast corner. So that led us to where's the ideal location to put a tower that is sort of going to allow you to have this separated procession to go up to the building. That's why we ended up with the diagram we are today. So having said that, we presented this scheme in our last Planning Commission meeting. It put the tower in the southwest corner of the building, which is the least visible from Third, East Third Avenue. And it was respectful. It was meant to be a juxtaposition of a contemporary design with the historic design, however, a very respectful version of it. Tim was explaining to me what he liked as far as architecture just opposed against new, just opposed against existing and historic. And he gave me a lot of examples that were approaching more the sensibility that you'll see in a Frank Gehry building, you know. So we're not that extreme. We're very sensitive. This is sort of a played-back version of how contemporary can actually complement an existing historic by allowing the datum lines to carry across, window lines to carry across, et cetera. So we had this option, and then we did a variation on it. You can barely see it on this particular view, but there's a line of glass that goes down the tower on the left side. What we try to do here is open a corner because to really accentuate that panoramic view. Again, this is what we had showed previously. And this is what the true vision is that's being realized. So this is the preferred scheme that we'd like you to comment on. As you can see, there's very little difference in the rest of the architecture except opening up the corner of the tower. Again, the original scheme, and you could, you notice the difference here with the shadow. If you watch the shadow on the right, you can see we're just opening up that corner. And that, and that's also going to be apparent when you're going up the elevator to the penthouse, which is basically a payoff of the architectural sequencing. And again, from the view from the street, a lot of what is difference between option one and option two is not apparent in this particular view. And then a view further down East Third Street for what we showed last time we met versus what we're proposing. So again, you know, the elevator is an important thing to put in. A gurney-sized elevator is going to allow us to have that, I guess, safety added to the building to get gurneys up to the office levels. It's also going to allow us to get functional reasons, or functional uses, like bringing equipment up to the penthouse where we have all the mechanical equipment. So there's a functional use to it as well. But the main thing is the sequence and procession that I was just mentioning to you, and really celebrating the new office floors that are now the top three floors of the building. And so, you know, accessibility will also be introduced with the elevator, and then the firelife safety with the tower, the stair towers attached to it. So this is what we're asking you to consider. We were careful in where we placed the building, and then we were careful in how we have that reacting to the existing architecture. However, we were intentional in the contemporary architecture that we're introducing. And we think that it's successful in that if we carry the datums and the lines across, that it will be complementary to the existing historic building. So I want to thank you, and I'm going to stop the chair. And I'll bring up any plans if you want. The other thing, and I can show you if you need to, but in the plans that we sent out recently, we added a trash room to the ground level, and that trash room was in response to our last Planning Commission meeting, where there was a concern of restaurant trash occupying the public right of way or the public path on Ben Franklin Court. We added a trash room within our building footprint, and it's workable to be able to house all the trash that we have today for that restaurant. You're on mute, I think.
No one's going to be able to hear me that way. Thank you for your presentation. Commissioners, do you have any questions that you'd like to ask at this point before we open up for some public comment?
Um, I do.
Please.
Yeah, I think the, could you just show us one more time? You went kind of quickly from the, that you were showing us the change from what we saw in December to now, and I, I kind of missed that a little bit. It was like something about... Oh, I see. Okay, so you added windows to, so you added more glass to the side, to the east side?
Michael, I think you're on mute.
I think, I can't hear him, but I think...
Sorry. I figured out how to get them mute there. We, yes, we're adding additional glass to the east facade by wrapping the glass on the south facade back one pane of windows. So this view shows it the best. And you could just, it's relatively subtle, but it, what it does is we're able to, with our elevator, the cab itself will be doing the same thing. It will have the glass on the back wall of the cab, and it would wrap the sidewall of the cab about one-third back. So this allows someone standing in the cab to really have the panoramic view of downtown San Mateo. And that, that's the, that was the vision that we were given to work with. And so initially, we were, and my conversations with Tim, we were conservative. And what we're trying to do is be a little bit more realistic to the vision, but by not compromising the architecture. And so that's what you're looking at right now is an interpretation or reinterpretation of this initial idea to just add a little bit more glass.
Okay, thank you for showing that to me. That went by quickly.
Thank you.
Would you like me to leave the drawings open and for any further questions?
Um, no, why don't we go back to our regular screen? Thank you. And we may have to ask for you to do that again. Okay. So I was going to ask, Nora, do we have any, anyone that has called in for public comment?
I have seven attendees listed that want to speak.
That do want to speak? Okay.
Seven.
And seven. All right. And so I do want to mention that we had two letters sent in, and I would like to have those read into the record if we could. So why don't we start off with the two letters to be read in, and then we will call up the people who'd like to speak one by one?
Okay.
Certainly, Chair Mallory, just give us a second. We'll pull those two comments letters up, and Ms. Lau will read those into the record momentarily.
Hi, yes. So staff received one letter yesterday from Gil Gordon. And let me just, and I can, do you want me to read the entire letter? And the letter says, "I noticed the charrette learned a new word, noticed on the building the other day, and am interested to see the discussion and its outcome. I watched the previous study session and agreed with the commissions that the current plan has issues. As a resident, but not an architect, builder, or engineer, I believe the project would be more appealing to the city if, one, the extension of the elevator to the top floor would be within the existing structure of the building. Two, any change to expand the floor space on the top floor would match or build pleasingly on the existing design of the building. Three, if the building must go outside, the existing structure issued, one, better blend with the existing exterior, two, stop at every floor. Number four, the applicant offers long-lasting and tangible public benefits in exchange for any changes, possibly, one, year-round public access to the penthouse deck as a mini park or cafe restaurant, instead of the proposed limited easily affordable offer to let the public up at limited number of times per year. Two, permanently give a floor or two of the dorms to the city county or some housing agency to provide increased affordable housing in the city. Thanks, Gil." And another comment we received was... Sorry, it might take me just a moment. Sorry, I'm having trouble pulling up the email that came in today.
Wendy, would you like to hold off on that, and you can look for that while we have some other speakers?
Sure, that'd be great. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Nora, would you go ahead and start calling people in? I will say right now that with seven speakers, we are going to need to limit the time to a minute per person. I know that's not very much time, but, but we are trying to get in line with our hard stop for our 7 o'clock meeting.
Just say... Okay, the first speaker that raised their hand is Tarek Aljaber.
Okay. Hi, can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can.
You can hear me.
Okay, great. So thanks for giving me the minute. I have a minute, so I'm going to go pretty quick. So my name is Tarek Aljaber. I'm an entrepreneur and a startup founder. I made sure to attend this meeting and miss actually dinner with my three daughters just to voice my honest opinion with regards to how Tim Draper and his companies are helping the startup ecosystem, specifically in San Mateo. So since I became or joined, you know, the Hero City, Tim Draper Hero City, I've seen and experienced the positive impact that Tim brings to the town, to the community in many ways. For instance, I'm getting almost a rent-free desk in his, in Hero City, and I'm paying only $50. That's in Silicon Valley, paying $50 for a desk. That's unheard of, right? And also mentorship, you know, Tim dedicated a lot of time to actually help the startups within his ecosystem and Hero City. And also, he brings in the huge VC network to those startups. Without Tim, I don't think we, many companies in the town of San Mateo would exist. For instance, you know, our company is building artificial intelligence services for manufacturing and industrial companies. And without the hundreds of thousands of dollars that Tim and his network is putting into those companies and taking a leap of faith, well, we wouldn't be existing. So I would highly recommend actually considering supporting Tim and his companies and as it's, you know, many, as we've seen, a lot of startups are being, you know, moving out of town and going to Austin and Dallas and Miami because of all the restrictions that the cities and, you know, the counties and the state is putting on small businesses.
Thank you.
That's my two cents. Okay.
Thanks so much.
Thank you. We have Karen White. Okay.
Hi, guys. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Cool. Sorry, I realized my comment may now be slightly echoing. Very similar. I also am based out of Hero City, one of Tim's buildings. I actually moved over to San Mateo during, during the pandemic. And personally, it's had a huge sort of impact on how quickly I settled into the town and felt at home. And so I just wanted to jump on and voice my opinion. And again, just quickly and say, I think the proposed changes can only do good for the ecosystem and the community that is being built here. So, yeah, just to voice that opinion.
Thank you.
Chair Mallory, I was counting the attendees, and so right now, nobody else has their hand raised.
Oh, okay. Wonderful. Thanks for letting me know that. Wendy, are we, are we in line for the last letter?
Yes.
Okay.
Last letter is from Diane Whitaker, and the alert reads, "Thank you all so much for your thoughtful and very relevant questions and comments during the December 8, 2020 study session. I especially like the comments, historic buildings are a gift from the past, and historic resources like open space, once it is gone, you can't get it back. It was clear to me from Tim Draper's comments, a glass elevator to celebrate the views of San Mateo. He wants to create a San Mateo version of the San Francisco St. Francis Hotel or Fairmont Hotel glass elevators. During this evening's study session design charrette, I urge you to be creative, be bold, be resolute. Do not allow Tim Draper to bully the San Mateo Plank Mission into a less-than-stellar solution. Modern architecture has its place, but this is not it. Best of luck, Diane."
Thank you, Wendy. Thank you, Wendy. So having no more public comment, hands raised, we'll close that. And we'll bring it back to the commission for comments and, and any more questions that you might have. And I'm going to try to write down what everybody's saying so that we can have some kind of a summary. So before you sign off, let me make sure I have your, your comments and your opinions correct. So who would like to go first?
I can go first through the chair.
Perfect.
So Michael, you had indicated that you also did a updated design on the trash, the, the trash storage. I'm looking at the proposed themselves. Where is that located in the basement or on the ground floor? And where in the actual floor plan?
Located on the ground floor. It should be right off of Ben Franklin Court on the west side of the building, sorry, east side of the building.
Okay, I don't see that being indicated.
I can share my screen and, and point it out.
They come on page twenty-one of the proposed ground floor design.
Okay, so this is the existing.
Yes.
And this is the proposed. So the great out area is actually the new trash room on the upper left.
Okay.
Okay, so there's an existing separated corridor, exterior corridor. That's right parallel with Ben Franklin Court that has a half wall separating the two. It's an ideal location to take anything that you don't want, you know, circulating into Ben Franklin Court. Down and then out to the doors at the very bottom of that same corridor. That's below where our new elevator is going.
Okay. And then just, just for clarification, you guys, the architect firm and Draper University went through, I believe, two different iterations of where the additional elevator will be placed indoors, correct? And inside the building?
We, we had studies and conversations about it, but it, it wasn't. It wasn't something that was achieving what was the actual vision of what was meant and the change of use. And that's a big part of it, as well as the fact that the towers themselves and the footprint of how it disrupts the plan. Because as you can see, the footprint of the stair and an elevator is today's standard is, is pretty big in this plan.
And then in agreement was the reason why the, the proposed elevator is not stopping every floor is to create separation between the university and the dorms and also the penthouse and the additional floors, correct?
Of, of that particular sequence, yes, of, of your procession to the office levels. That's correct.
Thank you. Those are my questions.
Through the chair, I had a couple of questions also. For the applicant. For the presentation that you made this evening. You had up a slide that it said, I believe it was option two.
Option two is the, the one where we're introducing a little bit more glass on the corner.
So is that, is that different than what, what was presented at the study session?
Yes, option one was presented at the study section.
Okay, so option one. Can you put up option one and option two again, so I could see the, see the difference? I apologize, but it did go really fast because of the time limitation, so it was.
No, understood. And I brushed through it too, so I apologize. But again, I'm gonna go to a view that shows a little bit more clearly. This view shows the, the main difference. And it's, if you look at the outside corner on the bottom right of the building of the tower. That's option two. And option one had a solid wall going down the east elevation. With, with the exception of the upper floor and the elevator lobbies to the right of that tower.
Okay, so you kept the. Okay, so you keep, so the, so you're keeping that external, you're proposing to keep that external elevator all the way to the top. You're just opening up. The only difference from option one and option, what you're now presenting is it's more open, more glass.
That's correct. The, the corner is open.
When you were, before you showed this option two, you were also speaking to something called a study one and study two.
Study one and study two, those, those are just showing.
Those were contemplating.
What the footprint of an elevator and, and a stair would be if you put it within the building.
Right, okay. So that was study one and study two was in the building, okay. And, and just so I'm clear, you, the, as an applicant, you did not like study one because you didn't like having an interior elevator that both the residents and the office, proposed office users would be sharing.
That's correct. And it didn't meet the vision that we were asked to design to either. But it also introduced elements, you can see here on this particular scheme where the elevator lands on the roof. It lands right in the middle of the mechanical room. So it, it would have been economically infeasible to do this particular scheme.
Okay.
And it's given location that I'm showing.
And then my last question was, there was a mention of the Hero City. Which is part of the Draper buildings, right?
It's across the street, correct?
It's across the street, okay. And is that, is that accessible to the Draper University students?
Yes.
And is there office space in Hero City that is available for communal usage?
I'll let Martin answer that exactly what the program is in Hero City. And he'd probably be better to, to reply to that.
Across the street, we are, Hero City is a rental desk space. And our ecosystem, we have Boost, which is an incubator. As for the student, like anyone else, we do offer certain memberships. Deductions or we give them a deal for coming over, but it is separate from Draper University in that sense.
Yeah, just to make it clear, Draper University is where the students go through their, their paces. And then there are a few things over at Hero City that the students are, have access to. And they can use the desks. And, and, and there's a media room and the green room and and the, so there, but the idea is that there's a flow you create this. You build the student and get them to be entrepreneurial. And then you have a place for them to set up across the street at Hero City. So yeah, and, and the, the deal that we did, Tarek was talking about was during COVID, we just thought, you know, look, we don't know what's gonna happen. So let's just do some free rent, let's do some opportunity for startups to come through and, and just have a place to go get their businesses going. So I don't know if that answers your question completely, but that's, that's what we use Hero, Hero City for. It's, it's a campus, it's a flow. And then we expect that the the top few buildings are gonna be more venture capitalists. And that will be helpful for all these startups to get funding, mentorship for whatever. And they do attract more business, so that's what they do.
Okay, those are my questions, Ellen. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Mike. We have twenty minutes. So do, John, do you have any questions or Margaret, any additional questions on the presentation?
Can I ask one quick question hopefully about the exiting? So I was just looking again at the stair and I think I asked this last time maybe. But is the new stair, I understand it's to serve the penthouse floor. Do you need that in terms of exiting to do this project?
The, the news?
Because I see it doesn't go to grade or exit out to public right away or whatever. It, it exits to the second floor and then you go to the existing stair.
It, it, it exits to an exterior exit stair. So what happens is your enclosed stair empties out on the third floor, which is the second floor roof. And then you go out down an exterior exit stair to the first floor roof. An exterior, another exterior exit stair down to the public, basically Ben Franklin Court.
I, I see that now. Okay, got it. I was reading the red exiting arrows in the wrong, just thinking they went to the other stair. Now I see.
Yeah. And, and what, what, just to elaborate on your question on exiting general. Your fire life safety, we're adding an additional enclosed fire stair to the building. And that's, it's a very positive thing for egress because right now it's really only one exit stairs enclosed and one fire escape.
Right. Yeah, okay, I remember now the exterior stair.
John, do you have any, any questions at this point?
No, it just looks like the only thing that has occurred here is we've added some glass on the corner for the elevator. And included a relocate or a new trash enclosure within a private courtyard or a path. Those are the only two changes that have been made since our last discussion.
That, that's correct. Thank you.
Okay, so let's open things up now. We have about fifteen minutes to put forth our comments on this study session. Rather than try to summarize things at the end, we'll use this time to, to talk about things. And we'll get the summary in the minutes. So does anyone feel strongly about starting off?
I'll start.
Thanks, Mike.
Okay, through the chair. So I appreciate the extra color that the applicant has given to walk through the design. I know at the original study session last month, it seemed like it didn't start until like three or four hours into the meeting. And everybody was pretty burnt out, I know I was. So this is helpful to take another look at it. And I know that in the study session, we were asked about the change in planned use at the top on the top three store floors, as well as the design elements. I know at the study session, I shared my feedback that I was not supportive of the change in use. And I just want to briefly mention again, I feel that, I feel the same way right now. So I will comment on the design, but with regard to the change in use, I don't believe that you know, putting offices on the top is justification for making the kind of extreme changes to the exterior. The applicant has shown us a plan that would be much less disruptive to the and I apologize, I'm probably not using the right architectural language, but it would be much less dramatic change to the exterior. If they used the interior elevator to bridge the ground floor and the top floor. I feel like that would be a better option if there was the approval to change in use on the top floors. Which again, I'm not supportive of. To support that option was they did not want the occupants, the VCs who would be occupying those top offices to be co-mainline with the students or residents. Yet it seems to me that that's the whole purpose, the state of purpose for changing the use at the top is to have this opportunity for students to be connecting with the VCs. So to me, that's inconsistent. I do believe that the, again, the changes to the, to the top. If that was agreed, I think it would need to be carefully looked at as part of the design, on the design. I'm noting that, that this building has not been officially registered. I know this was brought up at the beginning of Wendy's presentation. It has not been officially registered as a historic resource, but it is eligible. It is a contributor to the downtown historic district. And so it does qualify as a historical resource. And as I mentioned at the study session last month, I certainly look at it as a historic building. It is nearly a hundred years old. And to me, it represents the downtown San Mateo. It's over a hundred feet tall. It is, you know, by far the standout prominent building in the downtown area. So when we do have a design, which the change that's being presented here. Which does not address a number of the concerns around the trash and the landscaping that area behind, but I'll keep that part to the side. Because what was presented was a change to the, this exterior bolted-on glass elevator. And it's, I, I appreciate that the design has put more glass on it and opened it up even more. But in, in my view, that does not do anything to address my concerns around how that design looks on this building, on this historic resource. And, you know, when I was reading through the materials on a, a building that, you know, from the conditions of approval from twenty thirteen. This building had to comply with Secretary of Interior Standards. And when I was looking at the exerted Secretary of Interior Standards from the July twenty twenty report that was furnished to us in the advanced materials, I don't really see how it's meeting those standards. And it's, it is creating, putting a glass elevator that basically takes attention away and totally contradicts the, you know, Spanish architectural style of the building. So I haven't really seen anything here that changes my feedback or thoughts that I shared in the study session. Those are my comments.
Thanks, Mike.
Through the, through the chair? Make this quick. I want to thank Michael Castro and Tim Draper for giving me a little bit more understanding of, of the reasoning that they felt that this was appropriate for this building. I do not feel that putting a, a dedicated exterior elevator with views is important enough to the downtown area that we should deviate from the historical nature of this building. Mr. Draper, you did say that, you know, San Mateo is a forward-thinking city, which they are. Yet they have strong ties to the past and the historical component is very important to the city leaders and to the voters in preserving what we were given from the past and continuing to bring it and use it as a conduit for the future. I have not changed my views on the project. I, I, I do understand your reasoning better, so thank you for that. Yet I don't, I don't, I do not support the changes that I see tonight. Thank you.
Thanks, John.
Should I go ahead?
Sure, Margaret, that'd be great.
Great, thanks for the presentation. And we're all trying to be quick and concise here. I do want to say that I appreciate hearing about, you know, getting a taste of the positive impact that Draper University has. And I think that idea of mentorship and apprenticeships in this field are, are really, you know, intriguing and exciting. So I appreciate that. And, and because of that, I do, I am supportive of the change of use on the top three floors. Although we, you know, we did, a good point was brought up about, you know, the separation isn't necessarily necessary. But I, I think that it's, it's a, it, it, it makes sense in some ways to, to introduce office space at those upper floors. Oh, and I did also, I made a note here, I did visit the architect's website, Michael. And I do, I do appreciate your work and I, I think the juxtaposition of modern elements on a, on an older or historic building is an interesting solution. It's, it's, it's oftentimes, I mean, I really liked the project you just showed, five nineteen Uptown. So anyway, I've given the project a lot of thought and like I said, I do appreciate. like I said, I do appreciate a number of things about it, the modern juxtaposition against the historical, the accessibility upgrades and the exiting improvements. I do think the separate entry to the building is also has some potential, given the fact that the I want to call it alley, but I know it's Ben Franklin Court, I guess, given that Ben Franklin Court, I think, could be, you know, could be a more inviting entry to the building, or could be could be an opportunity. But I I haven't really chained, I mean, although I sort of went through it all again and tried to determine if, you know, if if all of that outweighed the historical aspect of the building. And I think that the fact that it's been deemed a historical, you know, eligible for historical registry, and that it's considered a historical resource by the San Mateo Downtown Historic District is really important. And like I said before, I think I'm the one that said last time that, you know, like open space, yeah, I mean, buildings are important, but once we build on the land, that's it. We're not getting that open space back. So kind of the same with historical buildings. Once we modify them, we're really not getting it back again, and so we really need to tread lightly. I think that, just to dive into a detail real quickly, I think that what really kind of brought it around for me is that on the rear elevation, there are these two elements, and one of, one of the statements in the documents said that, you know, there's the this loss of some distinctive features on the rear elevation, in particular, the windows surround on the right side as you're facing the elevation, and it's leaving one on the left side that really doesn't make sense now. So if if this glass enclosure and stairway were not creating something that now doesn't make sense, these two symmetrical window enclosures, I might be more receptive to it, but it it takes away from this, these two elements and leaves them, leaves one sort of standing there by itself. So I I for that reason, I can't really, I I was trying to hone in on some specific thing, and that's that's kind of the one thing that really bothers me, I'd say. And the molded string course that is really beautiful, and it's just cut off, you know, kind of at a random spot. I think if the stair was able to be somewhere else or turn ninety degrees or something, perhaps that might help. I don't know exactly where the string course and the that window surround lands, but but that would probably, you know, there might be some way to solve that. So I don't really support the structure on the back corner of the building as, well, I guess I should call it the southeast corner of the building as designed.
Thanks, Margaret.
Okay, through the chair, I'll be brief to give you ample time to have your comment as well before a seven o'clock meeting. So I want to thank Mr. Draper and also want to thank Michael for their presentation today. And also want to thank them for their insight on, I know, one of the questions that I had previously in the previous study session was looking at other different elements or different design elements of putting the actual elevator inside the building. And thank you for presenting that those were actually part of your initial conversations to trying to figure out a way to not change the exterior, the exterior of the building. But however, those elements were not financially feasible within the building. I my hesitation is I don't, I don't believe, and I believe, and this is in addition to the comments I've said in the last study session, is that create that separation between having an additional elevator that's only going to be used by the top floor is something that we, I feel that I can approve if it's going to be used by only a certain number of of individuals. If somehow we can go back to the drawing board, and I know this is a very negative, and you discussed that there is no way to use the the current elevator to get to the top floor, but if we can find other creative ways that we don't have to build out the exterior with a glass elevator behind the the west side of the building is the best way to go. I believe that trying to keep as much of the historic preservation in downtown San Mateo, it's very important. Yes, they use a natural light and glass on the elevator enclosure. It's very nice, but it does keep away from that historical element that we're trying to preserve in the downtown, so. I like the addition of the trash rooms or the trash storage locations. I know that was a contentious argument last time, but that there is trash being left outside and having those enclosed is is a positive, but at this point, the way the structure and the design is presented, I can't go ahead and approve it.
Thanks, Ramiro. I will echo my fellow commissioners and a lot of what they've said tonight. I place great value on the historic resources in the city, and I feel that iconic buildings such as this should be respected and not not changed radically so that they are not iconic buildings anymore. My my concern with what we saw tonight with the addition of glass along the other side of that elevator was, I believe, last, in the last study session, we did make comments that there was too much glass and that it did not go with the general feeling of the building. So I will say that I was very surprised to see additional glass as what was being put forward tonight. So I didn't feel that any of the changes that were made tonight reflected any of our statements from the December study session. And that that is too bad. So I will echo my fellow commissioners that I am not in support of this. I do not want to see the Benjamin Franklin Building changed. So those are the comments of the commission and.
Can I make a comment?
Yeah, about thirty seconds.
Without without your support, without the support of the town, I can't sustain this. I mean, I I put three million bucks a year into the town. This is zero profit for me. The the school, the incubator, the accelerator is not making me any money. I am doing my best to bite my tongue here because I can't believe that you'd say you're going to have a ghost town on your hands. You you go ahead, keep it all historic. No one will come. You can't allow me to run my business and make this thing successful. If you're not going to allow that, then I'm going to have to move. And if I move, that means, you know, hundred, I don't know, hundred thousands of jobs disappear from San Mateo and go to Redwood City, or they go to somewhere else, Austin, Texas. I I don't think you're looking at this the right way. I get it. You're you're on the planning commission, you got to focus on these details, you got to make them work, everything's got to make sense. But look, we've been four years trying to make this thing work, two years since we applied, and now you guys are just shutting us down? I mean, what is this? What are you thinking? Are you thinking, oh, yes, San Mateo, it's a wonderful place, everybody's going to just keep coming? Let's just keep part of these buildings the way they are? They're not. They're going to leave. I'm going to.
Thank you, thank you.
I am going to sell the bill. Any of you guys want to buy the building? I, this is ridiculous. I'm I'm so, oh, my God, I can't believe it. I get what you guys need to do, but this doesn't work.
Thank you for your comments. We're going to move on to our reports and announcements. Salish, do you have anything for reports and announcements on the study session?
I do not, Chair Mallory. What we will do is summarize the planning commissioner's comments and make them as part of our minutes and provide them for your consideration at the next available meeting.
Thank you, and our meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.